Our work session, this is a work session in preparation for our board meeting on July the 20th. And we've got a couple of things, and I was about to text the chief because I'm wanting to remind him he's on the work session agenda. But Chief Yarborough is here to, to give us an update on the youth programs that they're doing. And so I thought that would fit nicely in with our, the curfew issue and the things that the other, that Chief Ballard's gonna report on. So Matt, would you do me a favor and text Chief Ballard and refresh his memory about the, about being on the work session, please, sir? So basically, we'll call a meeting to order and if we notice we don't have a quorum and we do not need a quorum for our work session. So this is just a matter of us going over the items that are on the agenda. If there are any questions of any depth that anybody needs to get a little further into. So the first thing we do is chief, our chief Yarborough is gonna make a presentation on his youth programs. And by then, hopefully Chief Ballard will be here and can extend, and join us at the table.
Good morning, everybody. One of the things we wanted to do at the fire department was to help curb some of the, uh, curb some of the issues going on with these kids around. Not really having things to do, getting in trouble, trying to keep them from getting out of trouble. And also to help us as well because right now, we're short of firefighters. It's a nationwide issue.
Really?
Yes. We ate short right now at the department, so.
Which is driving your overtime. Don't mean to have hijacked your presentation.
This would be an opportunity to maybe get some firefighters from the community, from the high schools. And then, like I said, also try to keep them out of some trouble. So what we're looking at doing is doing a firefighter youth program. Basically what they do, they meet once a month. We give them some classroom time. And in the classroom, we could talk about being a firefighter, whether it'd be to be a firefighter. But we're also going to interview techniques, how to write a resume, how to write a cover letter, everything that you need to do to be successful when you get out of your career, get out of high school. Also, we will try to work with Mississippi State now to let them go out and do a, earn money by doing parking. So that's where the money will be coming from for the uniform and things like that. So what we want to make sure that they were all dressed alike, so they have basically a pair of BDU pants, a, two different shirts, a tee shirt and then a polo shirt that they would wear when they go to different events. So they were earning that money by going out to Mississippi State working and gaining, gaining that money. And then we turn around and buy the uniform and everything that they need, so it won't come from the city budget.
How are you identifying these kids?
We identify, that's the issue right now. We actually have this program at Stark High School with Miss Fair, Public Safety Program. So we have some of our kids coming from there now. We got several that's on board that might be in there. Really, right now, word of mouth, we probably got about 13 kids who are interested in it, just from word of mouth. So we'll put something out on Facebook. We want to get it to about 20, 25 kids, where we can really have an opportunity to work with them one-on-one. It involves the parents signing their release forms for them, parents being involved to a certain extent. But mostly it's gonna be our firefighters taking time with them, working with them one-on-one. Especially for the ones who are 18, we can hire 18, we can get them right out of high school. If they're interested, we can bring them right in. We talked to Pafford, they are looking at doing a in-house EMT class. We're doing many ways, but they'll give them a scholarship for that. We're doing in-house 1001 class, which is a firefighter class. So they also be able to have a scholarship for that as well.
At ages?
Ages, right now, we're looking at 15 to 18.
And they can do the EMT class at that age?
At 18, yes ma'am.
At 18, okay.
And the difference, the interesting part of this is the difference between this and the police department, for example, is the police can't hire until you're 21. But the fire department can hire at 18. So you can pull them right out of high school. And then, of course, the city has a program for, you know, additional education and it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity. So you're gonna meet, is it once a month, you said, classroom, month-to-month?
Once a month.
At night, soon?
At night, yes ma'am.
Okay, so it's not on weekends, it's at night?
Right, it'd be during the week, that way we don't take away from the, uh, school.
School.
And then also, it'll be the weekend for like the football games or basketball games, something like that. They have to, they have a time that they have to meet during that time as well. Right now, I think by doing this, we would not only get some interest in being a firefighter, but if they don't wanna be a firefighter, they still have an opportunity to learn some, some skills. To move on forward. Right now, between 18 and 21, that's the most critical age we find out. By the time they get 21, if they're not doing anything, the driver's license, we may start probably from getting tickets. They may have fines, they may have drugs, or they may get anything. So if we get them right out of high school, they can start their career three years earlier than they.
Well, if you get them at 15, then you, you've hit an age that's really important, too.
That's a great analysis, because by that time, that's right at the time they start missing them.
That's it.
Right at their time when they get out of high school, especially if they don't want to go to college.
Well, and this gives them, I mean, this just gives them a huge opportunity for a future. From, from education to the retirement. And I know when you're 15 or 18, you don't think about retirement, but maybe we, there's a way can, we can make people understand that that has, and health insurance, you know, that has all that, has, has huge value, so.
Who's looking at the 18, you graduate high school, you don't wanna go to college and come to, you getting a job making thirty-seven thousand dollars a year?
Well, yeah, and, and it still doesn't preclude college or, or secondary, I mean, yeah, because you can, you can use the city's program to do that. It's a great opportunity.
Right.
You know, serve as role models for other kids in school.
So you guys go into the school, fire, the fire department goes into the school on a fairly regular basis, do you not? Is it once a month, is it once a quarter, or do y'all have a scheduled time to go in?
We have a scheduled time, public fire and safety program. They have, of course, law enforcement, they have education, now, it's law enforcement, it's legal, and then it's fire. So when the fire department comes, we basically go into the school, we, she allows to teach everything. So we're gonna act with them, they come to the station, so we have a bit of opportunity to work with them one-on-one.
Well, I know you do it with the smaller kids, I mean, with the, with the younger children.
Well, no, they have, these kids are juniors and seniors in high school.
That's those career track?
Right, career track.
That they're, they're set up there at the schools.
And I don't know how those new academic houses are gonna work, um, because that, they're gonna start that this year, aren't they? I mean, the, the.
Got the flags, yeah.
Yeah, the academic houses, so I don't know how that'll work. Are you, do you work with Dr. Sun, or?
I would be working with Dr. Hogan.
Dr. Hogan, okay, yeah. That would, that would make sense, because that's more that career track thing. I think it's a great idea, chief, I love it. You know, especially since we're in need of, we're in need of people, so, you know, the training and all of that. And we've taken that training in-house, for the most part, right?
Yes ma'am.
So we could do, I mean, they could just graduate from high school and roll right on over here. Yeah, those are real, yeah, those are, those are real opportunities.
And we get a chance to keep our kids in our community. Because right now, we have people that come in, they may stay four years and go back home, but they're from Stark, they're probably gonna be here. That's what we're kinda looking at, so.
Well, congratulations. Is, is the, training officer Park's gonna be the, the lead person on this?
I tell you, this actually came, this came from one of our firefighters, Jesse Morris.
Okay.
He came up with that concept and idea, and I told him, he had everything laid out, he wanted to run with it, so. We're gonna support him as he does it.
Okay.
He already got several people on shift who wanna help out, so we're gonna help him kinda stay in the background and let him.
Is there gonna be needed, any funding needed for this, is this gonna be part of the?
I don't think so, I think this, we can handle it and then, also with them working, trying to get some opportunities at Mississippi State of, out to raise some money, I think it'll be fine.
Okay, great.
Well, talk them, well done.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, kudos.
Well, the initiative.
Okay, thank you. Anybody, any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you, chief, absolutely, fabulous. Okay, well, and I don't see the chief, so we will go on, go ahead and go into our agenda items. And if there's anything, when he comes in, which I'm assuming he will, did you get a?
AC Stewart is on this.
Okay, good. All righty, the minutes, Chris?
Yes ma'am.
They're good?
Yes ma'am.
You got a thumbs up from the, from the both of you? Lisa, you're good with that as well?
Yes.
Okay, um, consent items, okay, we'll put, that'll put it, we are bringing back the new employee introductions. So, and these are, these are names I can pronounce, so I won't butcher those too badly. Anybody have anything they wanna have on the, listed on the agenda as announcements or comments? No? Okay. Uh, we won't, I'm sure, see Mr. Turner, we have no public appearances this time, and we have two public hearings. One of them is a variance from sidewalk requirements, and Daniel has called in sick today, so I can take whatever questions are. That's about Peoples, Peoples Dental, they're on, on Highway 12. They are asking for a variance from having to put that sidewalk in, um, and the details associated with it, it is, it is more expensive because there's a stormwater or a drain there that they would have to work around. So they're asking for, um, a variance from that, so that they don't have to expend, I think it's like thirty-something thousand dollars. I don't have the number right in front of me, you may have it in your packet there. And, and eight thousand is what it would normally cost, given that space, so they're asking for.
Where you said the location?
It's in front of Peoples Dental, which is where the old Ruby Tuesday was.
And they've spent quite a bit of money on that building.
They've spent half a million on that building.
Is it close to a connection, is it close to a connection sidewalk?
Yep, remember, we've been putting sidewalks all along Highway 12. So, yeah, it's, it's part of, part of that connection space that we were, that we've been working on. So it'll be something that you'll wanna take a look at in the packet, and we gotta have a public hearing.
Yeah, I wanna look at that.
Yeah.
Are we trying to connect all these sidewalks?
We are.
We don't wanna wait nobody, but we're trying to connect all of them.
Yes, so, but it's worth, yeah, it's worth a look, and, and we can't put it on consent anyway, since it's a public hearing, but that would be, you know, worth an opportunity to take a quicker, closer look at that. And then we've got our, our public hearing for the ordinance on scooters, which Chris has done a rough draft that is as close to final as we, we were, given the things we discussed. And so if anybody sees anything on it that they wanna modify, these, we've got a couple of meetings that we can do. We'll have our first public he, hearing here and see what kind of feedback we get, and I kinda expect us to get some, some feedback, and so we'll see.
Mayor, should we amend that to say first public hearing, just to make it a bit more clear?
Sure, we can do that. Lisa, we can, okay. And then, under mayor's business, we've got a resolution, interestingly enough, a million and a half that we received. I got too many zeros there, Lisa. Sorry, my million.
I wish it was fifteen.
Yeah, me too, fifteen million.
A misplaced comma.
Misplaced comma instead, yeah, no. We got a million and a half, if y'all will call from the legislature, to do an extension on Hospital Road and an extension on Stark Road. And of course, a million and a half is not gonna take us anywhere, but it will get us some engineering work done to make that determination. So I have put in there, um, the grant, and what we've got to do is at the request of the Finance and Administration Department for the state, we've got to request that they issue a resolution to issue the bonds. It's kind of convoluted language, but that's their, that's their request of us, so that's what this is, is a request, they go ahead and issue the state bonds that then would give us the million and a half. So, you know, it's, it's one of those things, and Chris, we've, I mean, we, we looked at the resol, they actually sent us a resolution. So we looked at that resolution and put that, and that's what you'll see in the packet. So from my, from my perspective, I would just say that's, you know, that's an easy consent item, but, you know, perhaps not. So if anybody's comfortable with it, speak up, and if not, we'll just leave it as is. Hey, AC?
Put it on consent, because we're gonna get money.
Kinda sort of, okay, all right, well, let's put it on, let's put it on consent then. Then we have, we're gonna have a report from Chief Ballard, and AC has just walked in the room, so we're gonna, we will, what we will do is we will circle back to AC. But this is a report as required by our ordinance, our juvenile curfew ordinance that we did, is that the chief come and provide us the most recent results from the curfew. So AC, did, did you know that you were on the work session, did you know that the chief was on the work session? He didn't share that with you, did he? We'll call him out on it, just for fun. So what we were gonna do is the, is Chief Yarborough has presented items that they're doing for the youth, um, for, from the fire department, but, and the chief said that he had some programs too, and so that's what this is about. Do you wanna share programs that y'all are doing for the, for the kids, like the night out program?
Yeah, we've got the National Night Out Prime, which is our major event, August 3rd, I think. All, all of the, and then the mayor, actually they're be there to give us some opening words. We're sending invitations out to all, all of the, and, you know, the department that wants to attend. We've been working with Brian, Brian, Brian was, they dealt with that. We got, we got some exciting things coming this year, some surprises, so, uh, Brian, you know about it, right?
Yep.
Also, I, I noticed, I think we had maybe, looking at, looking at the reports, one, maybe juvenile curfew violation over the weekend. And where we actually, they, they ended up calling the parents, and, and the parent was able to come and pick those up. He, he reiterated this morning on our, our meeting that we have available two spots for, you know, for, to some type of detainment at the, at the Lawrence County.
I'm talking about, I'll tell you what, I'll address that.
Okay, okay, and, but other than that, we just continue to, uh, we more looking at educational, educational first. Make sure we put out the educational part of the juvenile, uh, orders. Other than that, we got the big event coming up with, with Pastor Rain with the backpack giveaway at the end of, I think it's the last Saturday in July.
Is that back to school, back?
Back, back to school.
Okay, and, and that's at the sports, sports places?
That's gonna be over here at West Side.
To J.L. King?
J.L. King, West Side, where we had the last two events. With all the churches coming together and with some, uh, some prayer and walking through, I think it went through Henderson Hill the last time. So I don't know what, what, who, who gonna, wedding on March 2nd this time. But I think it's just focused on the backpack giveaway.
Okay, so it's the last Saturday?
I think it's the last Saturday in July.
In July, okay. And the National Night Out, though, is at the sports place?
Yes ma'am. National Night, Sports Place, August 3rd, Tuesday, from six to nine.
From six to nine, okay. All right, we'll, we'll make, sure we get that on, out on social media as well?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it. And since you brought up the juvenile.
It's a board meeting night.
No, it always is on a board meeting night.
Okay, okay, just, you, you mentioned us coming and speaking, and so it'll be well underway, but before we get there.
Yeah, it is always on a board meeting night. It's, I mean, it's a national night out, so they didn't, they didn't check with us before they, before they scheduled.
Worldwide, they do it.
Yes. So. We will, we will head over there after we're done. But let me go ahead and do, because there was a, a local programming or local news item on the, the detention facility. And so Tripp Harston, Harston, who is the president of the Board of Supervisors of Lawrence County, and I have been in contact, and they have a, they have a, certainly a, a support structure that they're willing to look at this with us for. They, they have, we used to think that, you know, detention was an issue, we didn't have access to detention facilities. Judge Quarles has said that, you know, she, she has to hunt for detention facilities, sometimes Hattiesburg, sometimes Tupelo, sometimes there aren't any at all. And that in order to make an impact, or at least to impress some of these kids who seem not to be impacted by house arrest, or, you know, their parents are not controlling them in, in the kind of way that they need to, not exercising that control, or unable to, because this, the kids just aren't paying attention to them. That having an opportunity for a detention facility is, is important, and she deemed that important. So we had a fairly large community meeting, and I say by community, I mean the surrounding counties, to consider what it might take to do a, a, an area, a regional juvenile detention facility. And when we did that, we found out, interestingly enough, that Judge Kaiser, who is the juvenile court judge in Lawrence County, came to that meeting, and she said, well, we have 22 beds, but we only can use six. And so, you know, the question was, why? You know, you've got this facility that, that could be used. And so with that, we pivoted, and I went, well, why can't we just do what we do with October Hall County, which is we give them X amount per year, and we have X amount of beds. AC, don't we have 10 beds reserved down at October Hall County?
Uh, yes ma'am, I think we have, I think it's 12.
Okay, we have, we have a set number of beds that are available to us, and we pay them for it, so they're, they're there for us. And so using that same concept, I've been talking with the president, President Harston about that, and so there is an agreement that Chris and their attorney, their county attorney are working on for an interlocal, for us to do that. And so that's kind of what we're looking at doing, is setting up, so we have two beds that are available to the city. And Judge Quarles has said that she will reserve those for kids that are from the city. And the irony to this is that it's actually the county's responsibility, but a lot of these kids do come from the city. And so I told Judge Quarles that, to me, it only seems fair and reasonable that we would participate in that program in a financial way to make sure these beds are available to us. And so that's what this is about, and I don't know how far Chris is down the line getting this interlocal papered.
Yeah, we drafted, we drafted it up, and I'm gonna send it to Tim Hudson today and let him look at it.
And that's their counsel?
That's their counsel, and so we're tracking to maybe put something for the board at your pleasure the next meeting.
At the next board meeting? Okay, and we've got to get, you know, the negotiation piece of that is how much do you wanna charge us? Because, you know, I think it ought to be about X, and right now, they're charging Y. And so we need to see if we can get an agreement on something that says, if we give you a guaranteed, a guaranteed amount of money on an annualized basis, then we ought to get a discount, because you got money coming in, period. And so I, I think we'll get there, but it's just a matter of them, you know, recognizing that and seeing that as a positive for them. And while I'm at it, interestingly enough, Judge Quarles is also the youth court prosecutor in Clay County, and Clay County's interested in reserving a bed. And when we had this larger, wider discussion a couple of months ago, it was back in May, Winston County was also interested. So I think there's an opportunity for them to, to have the funding they need to maintain their facility. And so, you know, and then we do have what is, in essence, a regional facility, which just, to me, is a win-win all the way around. So that's what that's about. Yes ma'am?
And I've, having read some things on social media, I think it's important that we distinguish between a juvenile detention facility and a jail. We're not sending children to jail.
And we can't.
No, we can't. That it is a detention facility, they'll have education opportunities, they'll have counseling, they'll get medical care. It's, it's very different than from sending someone to jail.
Yeah, and that's dictated by the state. I mean, you can't send them to a, to an adult jail facility, which is why, for the most part, not being able to find that juvenile facility has created a situation where they just turn back out into the community. And so this, hopefully, will impact some of these kids to say, we don't, this is not how we wanna live our lives, you know, we wanna do better and be better, so that's certainly the goal, but yeah.
But for the short term, though.
It's 90 days max.
Ninety days.
Yeah, so hopefully they will be influenced by that 90 days, or whatever.
And, and it wouldn't be every child that's picked up, it would be the ones that are most in need of some interventions.
Yeah, there you go, yeah. So anyway, just, just to be clear on that, since AC brought it up, we're working on it, is the answer.
So if we, if we pick up one curfew violation, they can't, they can't find the parents?
No, no, that's not what that's intended, no.
No, that's not.
Because you'd have to let them go at 5:00 AM anyway, because that's when the curfew ends, so they will no longer be in violation of anything at 5:00 AM. So, no, we have, we have other ways that we're managing.
Even one, that councilor stays in control.
Yeah, and, and use gun, I mean, we've got kids with guns, you know. Fortunately, you know, nothing's, no juvenile yet has, has been injured, but we've got kids with guns, and so that's, those are the, those are the ones, so. All right, anyway, that, we'll get a report from Chief Ballard. And under board business, we've got a signed agreement with, uh, this is the associated building system, this is the Nucor building. And this is the agreement that Chris has negotiated, this is what reflects what we talked about at the board meeting last time. So from that perspective, Chris, you're comfortable with this?
Yes, and, and this does three things primarily, guys. It, it sets the sales price, it authorizes the parties, both Starkville and the business, to engage a broker to help market this property, and Joe Max Higgins has signed off on that broker. And it also memorializes the percentage split of the proceeds that we talked about at the last board meeting.
Right, okay.
Just puts it in paper.
Okay.
Consent.
Consent for that, okay. The next item is community development and planning, we've got a, this is, this is what is Triangle Cross, it was at 12, and they've, they've now gone to rename it to be Triangle Crossing. So this is the Castleberry Project, and it was passed unanimously by P and Z. So if you are interested in consent, then this would be an opportunity to do that, but it is, it's basically just the preliminary plat program.
This is the old Karen.
Yes, yeah, this is Castleberry's new large, large project, so, am I interested in consent?
Knowing how my P and Z operate, I'd move to say no.
All right.
But I'm sure they looked it over.
Let's put that on consent, I am sure. And the next one is just reappointing folks, and we don't have, we have one person for each position, so that's a, that's a good consent item. Engineering, this is declaring a back hose surplus and then auctioning, auctioning it off, and then replacing it with a used cat, and we figured out how to get a used cat, Ms. Lisa? Okay, consent, consent for that, guys?
I got a appraisal, I think it shows it was a, a little bit of a.
Okay, all right, good.
Well, and we got an appraisal.
Excellent.
And we've got the same, same issue next, which is the Dodge Ram with the, then auctioning it off and replacing it with a Ford one-ton pickup, so consent for that? All right, and then the Kubota mini excavator, same deal.
Consent.
Yep, we're, we're getting some equipment that we need badly.
Very badly.
Yes. Acceptance of the June financials, issues with consent on that, all right, and then approval of the budget adjustments. Alderman Sistruck, are you comfortable with the budget adjustments?
I haven't, I haven't looked at the last ones, but Lisa offered me the opportunity to make comments, and I think I'm gonna be fine with the adjustments.
Okay, do you wanna see it?
No, go ahead and put it on consent.
I have a change of things, I think you.
Oh, okay, so you're good with the payroll piece of it?
Consent for that?
Consent.
Okay, and, and, you know, if anybody ever wants, wants to get into the paperwork and everyone wanna pull it off, Alderman, you certainly can do that. This is just, you know, things that appear to be pro forma for us, and source of supply is definitely one of those, so. Source of supply as well as advertising for the garbage bags, and we, did we, let's put on here how many garbage bags we're gonna advertise for? Have we not made, have we made that determination?
Six thousand, I believe, you want a thousand rolls and you want five thousand rolls.
I have to mean about.
Okay, so six thousand rolls, so let's put that number on there, please, for.
You said five, you said five, for you and five for him.
No, one for him.
Okay, you made five, no, I made just then, I think you missed it.
Six, total. All right, thank you. And then the lowest bid for financing the bake first, over four years, what, what is this, Lisa? Police purchase? Oh, okay, this is the record. Okay, got it. Consent for that? All right, fire department, this is the EMS Pafford contract, Mr. Latimer, is the same as the last one?
It is, there are really no difference in any of the material terms. This is just a three-year rollover. They streamlined some of the language, Pafford presented us the draft, Chief and I looked at it, we didn't touch it, because everything looked good to us.
Okay, and chief, you wanna validate that you're still real happy with Pafford or no? You think it's great? Okay, and, and I have not heard anything other than good things, so, all right, thank you, Chris. Okay, consent for that one?
Say a turn, say consent.
All right, and the rest of this is approval of promotions, and chief, any issue with any of these promotions, you're, everybody's happy with that? So we have promotions for battalion chief and captain, and what else? Sergeant, and retaining those candidates for the promotion process, so consent for that?
Consent.
Okay. Authorization to hire a meter technician, Terry, that's, anything about that, we're good? Okay, consent for that one? And we're filling, filling some slots, thank goodness. All right, and this is a temporary pay increase, because Mr. Tate has been operating in that position for over 30 days now, is that correct, Mr. Martin?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so this is just part of our normal operation, consent for that one?
Consent.
So his name's spelled correctly, it's eight years, I'll spell mine a year.
Does his name spell correctly, and it's eight years, spell nine and eight years?
Um, I know, that one I do not know. Let's take a look at that, Lisa, and make sure that's spelled correct, correctly. Um, and then authorization to convert four part-time positions into two full-time positions?
Consent.
Okay, yes. Um, and Mr. Schultz is a part-time deputy court clerk, which is, we, we're needing people in the court clerk, that's great, we're glad we've got someone, consent for that?
Consent.
And then advertising for a part-time payroll clerk in the city clerk's office, so consent for that? All righty.
Thank you.
And then, yes, and then parks, we've got, this is the lowest bid for wind screens, and they haven't, they, the ones we've got now are, what, four years old, five years old?
At least five years.
Yeah, and they are, they are in need of repair, or not repair, repair, but replacement, so if we can do that, and that, we, you know, we're hosting that tennis tournament, September?
All right, we'll, we'll...
Yeah, okay, so...
September, seventeen.
Okay, all right, so consent for that?
Consent.
All right, thank you. Uh, lowest bid from a key park, and the security cameras, so, and this is, this is great, I mean, this, this does so much for, um, the license plate readers, the security cameras, uh, and all of that, so, um, consent for that?
Consent.
All right.
Mayor, one word suggestion on that, to change the word contract from system, 'cause I don't think they sent us a contract. I think it's just an invoice.
Okay, all right.
Just to make that clear.
All right. Matt, are you familiar with that?
Uh, slightly, yes, ma'am.
Was it, do you, do you recall, did they send, they didn't send us any paperwork that you're aware of?
I don't think it was a contract, no.
Okay.
It was a purchase agreement, signature, of their terms.
Like a one-pager, kind of a...
One-page, yeah, we agreed it.
What should it say?
No, 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 it was, apparently it was a, it was just, just a one-page agreement. We, is that in the, is that in the, uh, body of the E packet? Okay. All right.
It's probably the E packet.
Okay, all right, and this one is, this one's interesting to me, this is a best bid for twenty-four benches. These benches are made out of the university, and, um, Brandon met with, uh, Briar Jones and, uh, the other gentleman, Doctor.
It's just Mr. Jones, the other gentleman connected.
Oh, okay, um, and what they're doing is they're making, they're constructing them out at the university, and they're selling them virtually at cost, 'cause there's no labor associated with it, so it's just the cost and materials, but they're really unique, and so there are opportunities to do different things with them in the parks, and they've got different locations that they're looking at, so, um, it's just really a pretty cool concept and a way for us to really save some, save some money for benches around those, around the parks, so consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay, and then a change in the contract, which is, what is, what is this? Oh, we, it was an adding error, it was an addition error, so this is just a, just a housekeeping matter. Consent for that, thank you. Okay, and then this is, uh, for county to accept the foundation check at an amount of eighty-four hundred dollars. We'll take money, consent for that? All right, thank you. And then under utilities, we have a lowest quote for, uh, booster pump, consent for that one?
Consent.
And then best bids for source of supply, our usual.
Consent.
And then, uh, the lowest quote for manhole rings and covers, so consent for that? All right. Um, and then we have nothing for executive session, um, so that's the good news. And Terry, you didn't have anything you wanted to share about anything of your items, did you?
No.
Okay, all right, cool.
No questions.
All right, well, and if there are no questions, then that takes us to, uh, to and through, and we will get those out, um, with the highlighted in yellow, and board changes as appropriate, so, if any, if there's anything else? All right, then we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone, have a great weekend, Matt, we're out.